September 19, 2016 at 5:30 PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Marquita, would you please come and join me and we will lead you on the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you come up here, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kathleen, can we get a roll call, please?
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
We have some Mayor's Awards tonight and we will address those first. First Mayor's Award is to a gentleman that has been very involved with the goings-on in the city and with the youth and glad to give this award tonight to Kevin. Be it known that on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude, volunteerism, and commitment to families and children help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On September 19, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mr. Kevin Moore. Kevin, would you come on down, please? Kevin?
Thank you.
We thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you. Would you please have a word?
Well, I'm very humbled. Like I say, I've been in Boy Scouts for probably over 25 years. I belong to a troop who are celebrating our 100th year. We have been continuously serving our youth for more than 100 years, but the way the council does its charter, we were formed Boy Scouts before they became chartered in this area. So we're into over 100 years of service in that. And we even have some members in our audience who's been a member of our troop. And the other nice thing about our troop is, like I say, I have over 25 years, but the gentlemen who we mentor with, every one of us has our boys gone through it, but we still have stuck out and stayed there. So we have a gentleman that's over 40 years still with us, coming every Monday night and such. So I accept this award on their behalf because without them, we're all one big part of the chain. So I humbly thank you very much for this award.
All right, very well. Next, I have two that are here tonight and they brought their whole crew with them, or most of them anyways, and I sure was glad to see you all come down today. I'm gonna ask you guys to come and receive yours together, but these are two fantastic young ladies that we are truly blessed to have in the City of Burlington. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you both for being model Burlingtonians. Your positive attitude, selflessness, and commitment to the children of this community help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. You are rock stars. On September 19, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Jackie Swink and Kri Gully. Would you both please come on down? Jackie, be careful. That one's yours. That one's yours.
Thank you, sir.
That one's yours? Would you two please have a word and then I'll, I'm going to turn over to you two to, I think you've got two speakers with you as well?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so I am Kri Gully. I'm the site coordinator of Aldo Leopold Middle Schools' before and after-school program. We are, ran off the 21st Century Grant and we are in three schools, VHS, Edstone, and Aldo Leopold. So I didn't want to talk too much about it. We are doing, we're gonna let them do most of the talking, but we run four days a week for the after-school program, five for the morning. We are serving, this is our second week, this is the start of our third week. So we've completed two weeks and we have served anywhere from 60 to 81 kids in one day. So we are serving a lot of kids and we love what we do, so we really appreciate this award. And we are gonna let them just, we have a couple that have a couple things to say, so we'll let them talk to you.
Excellent.
My name is Jamari Thomas and I live at 18 Midtown Lane. What I like about the after-school program is that I learn so much about things I would never learn about. We have different clubs, 'cause some people don't like the same thing, like basketball or football. We have different options like chess club and drama club for students, and we even have a work club for students who is missing work to get caught up and won't be missing home. It was a time when I had bad grades. I didn't have time to pick them up, but Ms. Gully told me about the after-school program, so I joined and it worked. I was back with good grades. My mom was better than ever and more happy of me getting better grades. For a long time, I felt like the smartest person. It made me feel good, so I kept doing it. My seventh grade year, I've been doing good only because the after-school program. I don't have to work. I can play in the clubs with other kids and not just watch them. It's good to meet other people, make new friends, and stop bullying, so kids won't be left out. So we make programs and teachers just have to talk about it and there it is, your club.
Very nice. Why don't you just bang that gavel for me one time? Thank you, sir.
My name is King Robb and I live 2125 South Third Street. I love that after-school program because my friends are there and it gives us chances to open up and talk to new people. The after-school program provides activities, food, and learning. For me, I think that after-school program helps me get caught up on missing work. That after-school program is really fun. We love the clubs and the people in it. Just, that's all really cool. I really love how some students help others out when they're feeling left out. Thank you.
That's what I'm talking about. Thank you. Fix your hair, honey. Fix your hair.
Hi, my name is Camia Brewer and that's my little brother, Robert Brewer. And I am now in eighth grade. I've been in after-school program for three years. And before, after-school program, I mean, before school program. And I feel like it's good and it really helps you. In sixth grade, I wasn't like, I had really good grades, but as I, as I got older and like went to higher levels of grade, like when I was in seventh grade, my grades started getting better because of after-school program, like we do missing work. She'll pull you from your club if you're not, if you have a lot of missing work. But I feel like that's a good thing to make sure that, 'cause she's standing on top of you to make sure that you're doing good, so you don't have no bad grades or nothing. But if you keep it up, eventually you get to go to your club. I feel like it's really good. And then afterwards, she serves dinner and everything. And I think that's important for people who mamas and dads like work and stuff and can't come home and fix them plates and food. I feel like that's very good. And that's it. Thank you.
I'll tell you what. Very good. Jackie, cozy remarks? I'm so glad you guys came down. We need to plan something again where we can spend a little bit more time, but I'm so glad you guys came down today. Mrs. Swink?
Yes, Jacqueline Swink and I'm 120 Golf Lane in Burlington. And I just wanna, I've been here before to talk to the City Council. And as many people know, it's been my dream to have an after-school program here in Burlington. I've been working with after-school kids for about 10 years. So to have Kri Gully and to hear the students come up and talk about the experiences is just absolutely fabulous for the City of Burlington. So it is just getting bigger and stronger and I thank the city for recognizing us because that's what we want to do, is we want to get out and promote what is going on in the schools and we want to challenge everyone in the city to come out to the schools. It could be North Hill, it could be Aldo, there is a kids program over at VHS. So any of the schools, anytime you have, come out, call Kri Gully, call Cassie Gurs, the Director of the 21st Century Programs, and come out and volunteer. So thank you again for the award today.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
All right. Good deal. Let's, let's move along. Next, oh, well, here comes my, here goes my other award. Let me go ahead and do that. Perfect timing.
Thanks for coming down, young people.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Kevin. My next award winners, it's a, it's three generations worth of family members that have done this business here in Burlington. And I, you just have to admire people keeping a family business going. And they're really hard workers. I'm glad to have them here tonight. So on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to recognize Fenton Pawn Shop for being model Burlingtonians. Your commitment for over three decades of this community that started with D.W. Fenton and continues with Dustina and Deco is commendable. Your family business has helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On September 6, 2000, it was September 6, but so, but tonight on the, was it the 19th? This Mayor's Award is presented to Fenton Sales and Pawn Shop. Deco and Dustina, would you both please come on down? That's right. See you guys wear the cool, the cool t-shirts?
Oh, yeah.
Let me get a picture of you guys so I can look cool, all right? Would you two please have a word?
Sure.
All right.
You want me to talk to this?
Yes.
Yes.
Otherwise, the people can't hear.
On the other side, I can't fix them or other talking lips. We appreciate all this. We've been doing this for a long time. We, I've been doing this since I was 18. I'm 34 now, so 16 years. It's more of a legend these days than anything. Family businesses are really hard to keep going and they're hard for everybody to communicate and you gotta have a lot of love. Definitely. So it has been passed down. My grandpa opened in 1987. We pawn items for people, you know, just your average pawn shop. There's a lot of things that go in and out of the pawn shop and we do our best to turn everything in and, you know, work really hard.
We try our best to get Pawn Shop's a clean name.
Yep.
A lot of times, they get fooled in, in bad things and it's not always that, so.
Yep, so we really want to be the good part of a pawn shop because really, it's a service. A lot of people don't have money and maybe they have something that has been passed down from another person or whatever that means a lot to them. So they bring it into the shop and we loan them a little bit of money and some of these people are on fixed incomes and some of these people come from really high classes. So there's no in-between. Everybody runs in a hard spot and we try to help out. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys don't have to stick around for any of the ugly stuff. You can dip on out, but thank you so much for coming down. We sure appreciate it. All right. Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the City Council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of those items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous matters of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have five resolutions. First is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2016 Seal Coast Streets Reconstruction Project. The third is a resolution approving the purchase of easements from 2128 South 16th, Pen Number 16-08-377-007, and from 2203 Seneca, Pen Number 16-08-377-010, for construction of storm sewer associated with the 2016 Cascade Watershed Sewer Separation Project, Phase 2. The fourth is a resolution approving fiscal year 2015 to 2016, street finance report, road use tax. The fifth is a resolution approving the purchase agreements, approving the purchase agreements for right-of-way for roundabout. We also have public hearing set for October 3. The first is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The second is a consideration of sale of property locally known as 915 North Central Avenue, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. The third is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 154 Residential Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. The fourth is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 3107 South 14th Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District, with conditions. The fifth is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located at 2910 Madison Avenue from R1 Single Family, Single Family Residential to C1 Limited Commercial Zoning District with a planned unit development overlay zone. The sixth is consideration of an ordinance amending Section 150.07 affixing numbers of Chapter 150 Building Numbering of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? Okay, I see none? Counsel?
None for me.
All right. How do you get a motion?
Your Honor, I move to approve all listed under Item 1 Consent Agenda.
Second. Second, Kathleen.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. First, we have consideration of a sale of property located at, I'm sorry, property locally known as 1118 Maple Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Mr. Tisner? We've got, we've got one bid from Tristan Edmonds.
Again, this is the property located at 1118 Maple Street on the north side of Maple, just east of Summer Street. I'll go over some of the conditions as listed in the resolution and then some of the conditions of the home. Defective items shall be repaired as needed. A licensed plumber and electrician shall inspect and sign off at such items in the property meter brought up to code. Sidewalks along Maple and parking areas shall be improved, meet code standards as necessary. All permits shall be received in codes met as applicable for work and occupancy of the home. Purchaser shall maintain property and yard and hold insurance on such property until approval, upon approval of sale by the City Council. Work shall be initiated within 60 days and completed within 180 days. Approval by the City Council and extension of 180 days may be granted if progress is made. Quick claim deed shall be transferred to purchaser upon substantial completion of renovation of the home. 1118 Maple, this is an older photo. It was built in 1890, approximately 1,045 square feet on the main floor. Has a full basement with outside entrance. The lot's approximately 80 by 60 feet. Has two-bedroom potential. One-bedroom, you have to go through to reach the bathroom, so with remodel or movement of the bathroom and closet, it could be two-bedroom. Technically, it would be a one-bedroom as is. One full bath, off-street parking is available. There is some paving required for the two vehicles, although a portion of it is paved. Condition summary, upgrade electrical service. There is no air conditioning. Heating system is in poor condition. Plumbing repairs and wiring repairs as needed. Window repairs as needed, general updates and repairs. Scrape and paint the siding and all other necessary repairs. For all of our sales, 10% of the sale price paid by the winning bidder upon approval, with the remaining balance to be paid within 30 days. And then again, transfer of deed upon substantial completion of the home.
Okay. We've got a bid of $500 and let's, let's open up the bidding. I've got $500. Do I have a bid of $1,000? $1,500? Is it too low? Should I go higher? 2, $2,500?
I was thinking $501, but that, but. My name is Don Harder. I live at 1018 Monticello. I'd be placing a bid of $1,000.
Do I have a bid of $1,000? Do I have a, do I have a higher bid? Have a bid of $1,000? Do I have $1,100? $1,100? You guys are just gonna let Don walk in here and take this property like that? Nobody else? $1,000 going once? $1,000 going twice? Sold.
Your Honor, motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1118 Maple, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 1118 Maple Street, City of Burlington, Boynton County, Iowa. That's property to be sold to Don Harder. The amount of $1,000.
Let me see here. 1018 Monticello?
No, 1018 Monticello, okay. Don Harder of 1018 Monticello, Burlington, Iowa, with a amount of $1,000.
Second amendment.
Thank you. Let's, let's vote on the amendment.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote on it as amended.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right. Sold to Mr. Harder for $10,000. We certainly appreciate that. That's what you get for not waving to me the other day. All right. We have another property for sale. This is time for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 1505 Atna Street, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Similar conditions as before. Defective items are required to be repaired and brought up to code. Permits shall be received in codes met as applicable for work. Purchaser shall maintain the property and yard and hold insurance upon the property. Work shall be initiated within 60 days and completed in 180. Deed transferred upon substantial completion of the renovation of the home. This is 1505 Atna, located west of Gunnison Street on the south side of Atna Street. Some of the property details, again, the home was built in 1910, approximately 864 square feet on the main floor. It is a two-story building. Approximate lot is 42 by 90. Four bedrooms upstairs with one and a half bath. There is no off-street parking available for this lot. Does have 200 amp service. HVAC needs evaluated. Water heater needs repaired. Plumbing, wiring repairs as needed. Windows, front porch repairs as needed and all other items as necessary. Again, similar conditions for sale of property, with transfer of deed upon substantial completion of renovation of the home.
Works for me. This is a really nice property. I sure hope, sure hope you people brought your wallets down here. This is just gonna be a phenomenal property for somebody. Let's open up the bidding. Do I have a bid of $15,000? $10,000? Why are you smiling, Don? Do I have a bid?
Ron Gerdner, 2305 Miller, $500.
2305?
Yep.
What was that bid, Ron?
What's that?
What was that bid?
$500.
We have a bid of $500. Do I have a higher bid tonight? Got a bid of $500?
Can I get you to come up?
Yes, please. Just initially.
Then how much are the increments?
Whatever you decide.
Terry Ariano, 2,800 South Main, $1,000.
Terry, what's, what was the address again?
2,800 South Main.
Thank you.
We have a bid of $1,000 from Terry. Do I have a higher bid? Mr. Gerdner?
$1,500.
$1,500? $1,500?
$2,000.
$2,000? This is so exciting. We've got $2,000. Mr. Gerdner?
$2,500.
We've got $2,500 from Mr. Gerd, $3,000 from Terry?
$3,500.
$3,500 from Mr. Gerdner? Exciting, so overwhelming.
$4,000.
$4,000 from Terry?
$4,500.
$4,500 from Ron?
$5,000.
$5,000 from Terry?
$55.
$55 from Ron?
$6,000.
She's thinking about it. $6,000 from Terry?
$6,500.
$6,500 from Ron?
$7,000.
$7,000 from Terry? I think that, I don't know if this has ever happened before. $7,000 from Terry?
$7,500.
$7,500 from Ron?
$8,000.
$8,000 from Terry?
$8,500.
$8,500 from Ron? $8,500 from Ron?
$9,000.
$9,000 from Terry? $9,000 from Terry? Come on, Ron.
$9,500.
$9,500 from Ron?
$10,000.
$10,000 from Terry? Are you sure? You wanna think about it a little bit? $10,000 from Terry? $10,000 going once? $10,000 going twice?
Hold on. Hold on.
You know I will.
Dustin Gurnsey, 920 Linden. I've got 10-5.
Can you spell your last name?
G-U-E-R. N-S.
Okay.
E what?
And what was it? I'm sorry. Molina. What, what was the address, too?
920 Linden?
20, 10-5.
And your, your bid was at 10?
10-5.
10-5. We got a bid. This is exciting. Terry? I know you're just not gonna let that, that happen. We've got a bid at 10-5?
$11,000.
We have Terry at $11,000?
$11,500.
$11,500 from Mr. Gurnsey?
$12,000.
$12,000 from Mrs. Ariano? $12,500?
13.
13. We've got 13 up here. 13-5 in the back?
14.
14 from Terry?
14-5.
14-5 from Dustin?
15.
15 from Terry? Are you sure, Dustin? You're out?
I'm sure.
Dustin got a 14-5. We've got Terry at $15,000. Anybody else? Going once? Going twice? Sold. Terry?
Wow.
And that's a bargain.
Sold to Terry at, what was that final bid?
$15,000.
Was it 15? Oh, I thought it was 13.
No.
15.
That's official.
Okay.
Your Honor, motion to close.
Second. Thank you, Ron.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as fifteen oh five Atna, Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Your Honor, I have a motion to amend Exhibit C of the resolution approving the sale of property locally known as fifteen oh five Atna Street, City of Burlington, Iowa. That's property to be sold to Terry Ariano of twenty-eight hundred, South Main Street, Burlington, Iowa, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Looked at second. Let's vote on the amendment.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay, now, let's vote as amended.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right.
Congratulations, Terry.
Terry?
Thank you, Dustin.
Man, what a battle tonight, man. Dustin came to play, thanks for coming down, there'll be more properties to be sold soon. Terry? It's fantastic, I'll, I'll tell you, you made my night, that was just total excitement, you're a winner, my friend.
Well, I own other property in that area and I wanna keep it improving.
Good deal.
Very good. And I made that purchase.
Well, good deal, good deal.
Thank you.
You should have done some fantastic things in the community since you've been, how long have you been here?
Eight years.
Thank you, sir.
We're blessed to have you, thank you, Terry, well done, well done. Okay. All right, this is consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street, between Maple Street and Spruce Street, from M-one Light Industrial to C-one Limited Commercial Zoning District.
This was a request brought forward initially by the property located at the corner of Angular and South Main Street. They're looking to reuse that building for multiple uses related to homeless shelter and serving the, the community through that facility. The M-one zoning does not allow any residential use of the property. C-one does allow upper story and rear of the property to be used for residential, provided it meets all the building codes. Looking at the other properties along South Main Street, M-one being Light Industrial, a lot of those are used for limited commercial uses currently. And some of them are legal non-conforming uses, so we contacted other properties along that corridor to see if they desired a rezone at this time as well and did not have any objections to doing so. So this goes from Maple Street down to Spruce Street. After this was brought forward to council, I mentioned at the work session, the property's on the southern end. Property right along Spruce Street is up for sale and had a comment from the realtor asking if the M-one would be appropriate for auto repair, similar type use, similar to what's behind it with Campbell's Body Shop. So if this is approved, staff would recommend that that property be taken out at the next meeting so that it does not create a non-conforming status issue for that, those, that property on the southern end. So we would recommend amendment at the next hearing if you approve the first reading and we'll bring that forward for you. But this did go to the Planning Commission August sixteenth. Regarding the rezoning, the commission voted four to zero to recommend approval of the request to the city council. The recommendation was based on the current and planned use of the properties as commercial and residential on your future land use map for this area being neighborhood mixed use and downtown mixed use, which provide for a mix of residential and commercial uses and fit the C-one zoning and the elimination of some existing non-conforming use properties in this corridor. Property to the north is C-three, which is downtown mixed use. To the west, R-four and M-one. To the south, C-two and to the east, M-two, so there is quite a mix of different zoning within this area and C-one does fit based on the future land use map and the conference of plan and the existing and future land uses, so. And then, well, the applicant, original applicant is here as well, if you have any more detailed questions as well about the init- how this initiated through the property at the corner of Angular and South Main Street.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Can I see none? Counsel?
I'm from here.
I don't have an issue.
Can I address the council? I don't have any questions or concerns, I'm the person to ask.
Yeah, come to the, to the front, please.
Specifically, no questions or concerns.
Craig Fenton, I'm president of the new Charity and Talon Transitions, DMC. We are seeking to take the old pawn shop out that corner and make it into a multiple-use building with a homeless shelter, which will conform with new federal guidelines related to housing first, rapid rehousing, which is consistent with what community action is doing. That is not consistent with what the current Burlington homeless shelter does. You know, when you get into federal money, you get into a whole lot of guidelines that, that not, that not everybody's willing to do. So we will be willing to take people off the street. We will find them in appropriate places to live, feed them, house them, find them space to live. Love to, you know, now I've seen what a, what an auction is. We'll probably be back because it looks like a heck of a way to, to get people into a home is for a thousand bucks. You know, why wouldn't we buy houses and, and give them out to these people? Because it's gonna cost us that much to put them into an apartment. And they can become, you know, productive properties again. So basically, we came forward to ask that this be allowed so that we initially will put in more of a dormitories-type of facility for this winter with emergency shelters. And then, the building is a lot bigger than it looks like from the street, it's about ninety-four hundred square feet. So we've had people in looking at how to lay that out so that it will be apartments upstairs where we can move people off of, out of the, the main level and up into something more semi-permanent. Our goal is to have those people allowed to stay one hundred and twenty to one hundred and eighty days. That does a couple of things for families. One, it keeps them from moving schools during the middle of a semester. It allows the, us time to work with them through various programs like Bridges Out of Poverty and that to get them with a strong firm base underneath them. And we think that it's quite doable and since it sits right on the edge of the, of the people, the part of the town where we would be serving a lot of the people, we just think this, this is a great place. You know, the, the bus was just down the street and those sorts of things. We had talked early on about some other properties in town, we don't really think that we need those. So this is where we're gonna start. And if some of those other properties that are empty come available and we can find the funds, we might be back to, to help rehab that area, you know, for other uses, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing.
You're a rock star, Craig, that's, that's all I gotta throw in there, God, God bless ya, God bless ya. Counsel? All right.
Your Honor, I move to close.
Second.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye. Your Honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the first string of an ordinance rezoning the property located on the west side of South Main Street, between Maple and Spruce, from M-one Light Industrial to C-one Light Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
Looked at second. Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
All right. Well, you're there, Craig. Again, I don't know if you're gonna be leaving before I get done, but I just, I just wanna say, man, I wish I had an extra set of hands so I could give another pat on the back and, and a round of applause. God bless you, God bless you and everybody that's working with you, fantastic.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with the process of demolishing the Apollo School property at twelve oh one Valley Street.
Second. Double second.
Double second. Mr. Tisland, any, any thing to add on that?
So this is a property that we acquired, the Apollo School, a little over a year ago, about a year ago, with the thought process that, from the council's perspective, being able to clean up this area, whether that was through redevelopment as is or ultimately the backstop that we had put in place and identified before we did that was using TIF funds to pay for demolition costs on this. Our TIF plan has been amended to include that as an option. If we were to follow through with this step tonight, that would be, we would be relying on TIF funds to, to cover our expenses with this. You've had a few different developers who, and, who've come in and made presentations to the council this spring and later in the year about possible reuse of that facility. You had started to move forward with Miller Valentine, ultimately, they decided they weren't able to make a financial package work to proceed with. You had Richard Silva and Landover come in, I can't remember who their partner was, with a proposal for a mixed low-income housing tax credit application for both age-restricted and non-age-restricted housing. And that was one that you ultimately made a decision not to move forward with. This is now following up as, with the next step and it's up to you for your discussion as to how you really wanna proceed with this piece of property. We have an estimated cost for demolition on this, wouldn't we, preliminary, I looked at it, was about five hundred?
Five to six hundred thousand.
And we're probab- after dealing with Impact Seven G and doing their evaluation based on the asbestos and assorted materials in there, we're probably on it. We'd probably be estimating at the higher end of that, five to six hundred thousand range, prior to going out to bids.
Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns?
Yes.
I'm David Wagaman, two oh one Spring, West Burlington. I graduated from the Apollo School in nineteen fifty-eight. And I am a member of Screen Actors Guild, the American Federation of Radio and Television Artists. I have worked in several movies and television shows. And I want you to know that this building would be ideal for a movie studio. And I've talked to the Film Commission in Des Moines and they are looking for a place where they can have a complete studio. There's plenty of parking for the trucks and the trailers, there's plenty of room for offices. And there would be many, and many people that would have an office there permanently. You would build sets in the gymnasiums. It's a perfect place for a movie studio. And I hope you can do something about this. Burlington, you need to be on the ground floor of the movie industry in Iowa. And this is where you start, on the ground floor, with developing that building into a movie studio. Any questions? Yes?
No, I just, you know, I, I wish this was something that we would've talked about four or five years ago, you know? That was, that was my only thought, I just, I got a lot of emails today of people with last-minute thoughts on the building and, you know, it's just, I just wish that we could've heard some of these ideas a lot sooner, but, so.
It's not a done deal for the demolition, is it?
Well, it depends on who you're asking, I'm, I'm ready to tear it down. It's a done deal with me as far as.
Well, you know, I've heard the same thing about the Memorial Auditorium, people wanna tear it down. And I think this, it's ridiculous of destroying Burlington. And it's, it's just not right. It's an old, old building, it needs to be renovated. Tim, you have a, an answer or question or something?
Well, I've got a statement I'll make when the audience has their opportunity to speak. Go and listen to what everybody has to say.
Okay. But I just hope you do something with it.
Thank you.
Knocking it down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that has any questions or, or concerns tonight?
Good evening, Zach James, planning director, Southeastside Planning Commission. Just gonna reiterate basically what I had presented at the meeting last week. As one of our dues-paying members, I feel it's necessary that we provide an opportunity here to offer some of our services to offer a process, not necessarily to, to immediately stop demolition, but to offer a process that could happen concurrently to identify potential developers for this facility. As I mentioned last week, I think there's some things that could continue to move forward, such as asbestos abatement and working with groups to salvage the materials out of the building. And while this is happening, we could work through a process and offer our services to put out a request for proposals to development firms from across the Midwest and to see, see what options are out there. It may result in no proposals, it may result in a lot, but from what I have seen and what I've talked to some of the staff people and then over the last week, heard from several people in the community, while the building's been vacant for several years, there really hasn't been a strong effort to actually market the building. We've had two companies make proposals, but outside of that, really haven't made an outward effort to reach out to developers and see what's out there and what other options are there. So, again, I just wanna offer our services to helping move through that process concurrently while maybe doing some of these other steps that could, that would need to be done anyway before demolition. And some of the reasons, again, that I stated before why I think it's important is number one, I've been through the building twice, once with a couple architects, once with the structural engineer. And actually, I was reading one of the newspaper articles previously, and I think Richard Silva mentioned too that the building is still very structurally sound, while there are things that threaten the structure with some of the, the windows out and things of that nature. It's still a very sound structure, so I think it's a, might be a little short-sighted to move forward while the building's still actually very sound from a condition perspective. From the housing needs side, I think there's just a really high demand for housing need. As part of the Des Moines County Housing Needs Assessment and that process that went through, and it definitely shows the, the high demand and need for housing in this community. Obviously, the historic preservation, I think, is just obvious when you go stand in front of the building. It's a very strong structure and very commanding when you go stand right in front of it and see that. Those types of buildings just aren't gonna, aren't gonna happen anymore. And so to see something like that fall is very tragic. And then obviously, I mentioned before too, the cash flow and the incentives. Getting a developer in there and providing a TIF rebate is a much better cash flow for the community than paying the, the funding upfront to demolish the building. You're basically gonna pay somebody back for the increased property value in the future versus up-fronting all of the costs today. So, again, I just wanna offer our services to send out those proposals concurrently to taking step towards demolition. The end result still may be the, the building gets demolished, but at least making those steps now to try and find somebody actually be active, actively pursuing somebody, so.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
What was your, just curious, what, I mean, what were you looking at on time?
I guess I, I'm not sure what your timeframe is, but we would probably try and work within the next six months or so to try and get something out and get proposals back. They, those proposals, I'm not sure what their timeframe would be or what they would present. They may need extra time on top of that, but I think getting the proposals out and trying to get something back would be within six months or so. And I'm not sure what the timeframe for demolition is.
Did you know of some proposals that are forthcoming if you did this, or?
I don't.
You don't?
I've talked, I've talked to some people and actually today, I contacted Eric to get somebody contacted requesting floor plans for the building, they reached out to me, a company out of the Quad Cities. But I'm not, I'm not actively pursuing anybody at this point, I haven't really. I've had people that I've talked to and they've asked to look at properties and I'd walk through that one.
Okay.
As an option.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? Hi, Don.
My name is Don Harder, I live at ten eighteen Monticello. I'm not here to ask for a purchase of the property though, by the way, so, get kinda rested easy there.
We should have an auction.
For about, about twenty years ago, the city of Burlington started to identify dilapidated structures, in this case, most, almost all of them were residential, in Burlington. And John Mercer, who previously was your, with your inspection department, came up with a couple of proposals in which I sit down and talk to him about, in which they were encouraging, instead of just tearing down the property and having a empty lot, which normally brings you in maybe sixty-five dollars a year in taxes. which normally brings you in maybe sixty-five dollars a year in taxes, of trying some kind of renovation ideas. And that's, he's the original when they came up with trying to sell some of these properties and so on, getting them back on the tax rolls. I would encourage you to do the same thing in regard to Apollo. I haven't been in Apollo, I'm not sure of the structure. My feeling is, from a pocketbook standpoint, I would like to see anyone else put their money into it rather than us. If we could use the money that we have to make it more attractive to other developers, I definitely think that would be a great idea. I know we have other large buildings, I know of one that used to be called the Borax Plant here in town. It's probably going to be coming into that same category. I've looked at the building, that building is just like a fort, and I assume Apollo was built very similar to it. But again, it's something, and if we can get developers to come in and, and put their money up to try to do some things, we should try to make it as attractive as we can to them, even to the point of where we're already thinking about spending a possible six hundred thousand on demolition. Those kind of debate or incentives might be a good thing to use in regard to development. I just, I hate to see old structures tore down, when sometimes when you tear them down, you don't know really if you have very much left there at all. Even if you have the bare ground on Apollo, I'm not sure it's very attractive redevelopment area. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Anybody else with any comments?
My name is Jake Tommy Harjo, and I live in Fort Madison at 713 Avenue E. And that's actually why I'm here. I had trouble finding, I work at Graver Medical Center, and I had trouble finding apartments here. I just, plain and simple did. And I was looking for an apartment at the Stonegate Village, and it was a thousand a month. And I'm sorry, that's too much for me, and I don't know if that's too much for others, but plain and simple, that's too much for me. So, I made the decision to move to Fort Madison. And I just think that if you're thinking about opportunities to improve housing in this area, I would really recommend trying to find other re, renovative ideas, changing things up to improve the professional housing we have in this community, because I think it'll attract the individuals who work in these and who work professionally in this area, but also who wish to just have a better, safer place to live. And I think that this community offers that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Concerns or comments? Okay. Counsel?
Well, I think we've heard, for me, a lot of, you know, good ideas. And if there's people willing to help us save the building, in a sense, help save us a little money, I don't see why we wouldn't try it out. Getting rid of the asbestos and salvage, I think, is a good starting point. But I think, I don't know if anybody can answer the question for me, is how aggressive have we been with marketing the building, or have we at all? I don't know. I would, so...
That's a legitimate point, we really haven't been out trying to sell it.
I, I think that's an important thing we should try to do, at least.
I, I, we've never put together an incentive package of any means, but it's, it hasn't gone unadvertised. It's probably been on Facebook about as long as Facebook's been around, or it's been on the internet. There's, it's changed hands a few times privately, because of it being on the internet and being advertised for sale. We've not, we've not made an effort to, to come up with an incentive package and move forward. I, I'm, I'm, I'm torn, but I, I, my, my position right now is to vote in favor of the, of the demolition. Put a date of June first on, as the day that the building comes down. And pursue the idea of taking it a step at a time, if the asbestos taken care of, and at the same time, allow those that want to promote the property to promote it. And if there's an, an opportunity that's legitimate, and, and someone can prove they have the financing to make the property work, then...
That's key.
I, I would, I would be willing to take another vote and vote against the demolition. And I know it's going to be difficult to get bids for, for demolishing the building, knowing that they, that we couldn't stop that process, but I, I think it's worth the letting it be known that we would be in favor of redevelopment of the building if someone steps forward and can show that they've got the financial power to, to pull it off. And it's, and they, that financial power would have to come before the first of June. It's not coming forward the first of June and saying that we've got to wait for the state or the federal government or somebody else to act on it. They would, they would have to have the financial package put together by that date for me to support it.
Yeah, to me, if somebody could come in as a legitimate company that would be interested in something, the, the low-income thing, and relying on all the Iowa grants and all that, had the money and the interest to develop a nice building like that, into some nice apartments, that to me is win-win, but so far, we haven't heard any of that. I mean, it's all been based on getting the grants from the state and the federal government and so forth, and then a slow income. And I don't think that's what we need. I don't think that addresses the housing needs that we have in this town. But, again, if somebody could come in that really knew what they were doing and had the money and the knowledge to put it together, I'm very doubtful that there is such a place, but... Your proponent?
I, since that building was abandoned by the high school or the school district, it's had a number of different uses. The Area Education Agency was in there for a while, and the Alternative School was in there for a while, and, and then it's gone from one grand scheme of how we're going to redevelop that thing to another grand scheme, and there's the results. There's where it sits. And yes, we haven't marketed it, because we haven't had it that long. Last year, we picked it up, sometime last year, wasn't it, we acquired it? So, I'm going to vote in favor of this resolution, and I want the staff to proceed to go get the asbestos and whatever Heritage Trust wants to take out of there, whatever, however it needs to work. Now, how much time do you need to do that, Eric?
To do the asbestos? We'd have, we need to talk to a consultant on...
And I think part of that, as you talked with trying to put together bid specs, you're looking at this as a significant enough project that tying this with what's...
Parkview Care Center.
Parkview Care Center. You might be able to get some economies of scale and bring in a firm from outside of the community, which you're, for us, even the asbestos on a project of the size of the Apollo building, you probably are going to be looking at that. You may want to make the asbestos removal and...
You'd have to separate.
Demo. It may, you may get better prices if you have them combined together. You may get them better if you haven't pulled apart, I don't know. We haven't talked to Impact Seven G, which is something that we would need to do. If you are willing to look at options for other proposals to come forward, I think the preferred route would probably be just to say, if you're saying that we're, well, if we haven't had action by June first next year, we'll be sending out bid specs for the asbestos removal and demolition at that point. You probably don't want to have someone going in and starting to remove some of the items out of there that are of historical significance, if you're going to be actively looking or willing to consider development proposals, because if, if there was a redevelopment, they may want to see those items stay in there.
So, if you started the process of sending out bids for asbestos removal, what's the timeframe that we could anticipate someone would actually say, okay, I'm ready to start work on that?
From our perspective, you're probably not looking to do a project until spring, anyway?
Yeah, and a lot of the asbestos contractors are also demo, so you'd have to separate that out and just do asbestos.
Which might make it a little bit more diff...
Yeah, make it a little more difficult, but you could send out a bid and have it back in thirty, sixty days, and have completion in ninety days after that. So, it just depends on what timeframe we want to set.
So, if you got bids back by January one, they probably wouldn't want to work... Well, I guess they don't care if they work in the winter time.
Asbestos removal can go through the winter.
Yeah, they probably don't care at that point, do they? Okay.
Well, I think it's important, if we decide just to start with the asbestos, that maybe that the resolution should say that, because otherwise, this, this to me leaves it very open for just demolishing. There's no fine print, I guess, for not just totally tearing the building down.
Yeah, except, well, yeah, except Mr. Scott's idea, that we could always backtrack and go back on that, but that's kind of a...
You're, you're doing a mixture of items.
Yeah.
I think that you should either go the route that has been suggested from Southeast Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or just move forward with demolition. And if you, even with their route, don't let a firm come into the, to come in and start taking out items of significance prior to...
Right.
I'd give you, I'd give them a period of whatever timeframe, if it's going to be the six months, you have six months, that's to next April, to get a response back, and at that point, proceed with demolition. But it'd be easier to do, do one or the other, not some combination of the two, where it's confusing for everyone involved.
I'm going to vote for the resolution, and I want to start the process of having the building demolished. That's my position.
Yeah, and I guess Councilmember Scott, with, with your proposal, I'd rather see you vote against the resolution. It'd be easier for us to deal with, to go out and market it. If we're moving forward with demolition, we're moving forward with demolition. It's, it's easier for us to figure out what we're doing, from an operations standpoint.
Let's, let's decide, let's, let's vote and figure out, we're going to move from here, then. Let's, let's get down to it.
Okay, and I vote...
You had all the conversation that you want on that?
Yeah, I, I repeat what you said.
If you think that you would like to proceed with, from the understanding that you might be willing to entertain an offer, if something were to come up, I'd recommend that you just turn this resolution down. Go through the process of putting a set time for, to actively seek proposals. If you don't get something in that timeframe, then proceed with demolition. That'd be an easier route to do than to do the action tonight and then not really know exactly whether we're clear-cut on which way we're moving forward.
That makes sense to me.
So, just choose, decide one way or the other how you want to do it. If you're not ready to make that decision, table.
Just vote no.
Or vote no.
I, I would be willing to go until April first, get the, I mean, the, when the planning commission steps forward, and says they're willing to put their signature on it, and make a, make the effort, then I guess I'm willing to give them that, that shot. I love the same heart, I think, as you, Jim, but I don't, I want to give them the one last opportunity, I guess, to, or one opportunity, I guess, to step forward, but I can't, I, I can't be, I'm not going to be willing to support a long-grown-out, three-year process where they've got to wait for federal or state money to come through, just to be told three years later that it's, that, that they didn't qualify for the funding. So, it's got to be, it's got to be a package that they can come and say, we've got the money, we can do this.
One of the things that we would, I think, ask that a package come back with is some level, a track, track history of the ability to follow through with the proposal that, that provided some sort of justification that just, that shows that they have the ability to, to make a project happen. And I think that's what you're talking about, the pa, the three different proposals we had this last year, all were contingent on some outstanding things that were, some of them were fairly harder to get than others, and fulfill.
And it caused, it caused other people undue hardship, and they, they, there was ownership of these other buildings, they couldn't move forward with other projects, because they were, they were locked hanging out there, so... And quite frankly, we had an incentive program, we advertised nationally for a, for redevelopment of the Hotel Burlington, and it worked. If we've got the planning commission willing to take that on, and, and, I'm sure with the assistance of the city, that maybe we can make something happen in six months.
So, if we vote no, we're saying, though, there's going to be a time limit?
Well, if we, if we vote no, we're voting that down, and then we'll, we'll come back with...
Something else.
But that's, that's going to be my position rock hard, rock solid.
So, we're good? I'll agree to that, but I'm very skeptical. Let's take it to vote.
Okay, I vote means you're going on with the demolition. Okay. Fleming?
No.
McCambe?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Davidson?
Aye.
Okay. Well, Mr. James, works some magic, I guess. So, as, what's the game plan, then, you're going to bring it back?
I think that we're going to ask Zach to get a development proposal put together fairly quickly. Give you a chance to, to see it, make sure that, that there is something in it that looks out, out of line, but we want to start getting that marketed. I'd like to see that, the next meeting, if we could, but...
I don't know if we'll have it ready by the next meeting, but we can definitely start working on a proposal for other projects too, but then also recently, because of this, looked at several other proposals, similar projects from across the country, so we can have something to work with. But definitely want to bring something back to the council here to review. There's, I think, several stipulations that would probably need to be in there, so... So, we'll try and get something as soon as we can.
You have something next week? Excellent, Zach, very well, very well. Thank you. Okay.
You don't have to have that in packet, though, this Thursday.
This is the opportunity...
I would get with that gentleman behind you, talk about the...
The movie studio?
Movie studio, yes.
David Wagaman?
Yes.
Okay. This is a time where we will take comments from the audience. If there is something that you, that we haven't addressed tonight, that you'd like to, to address, this is your opportunity now. Is there anybody from the audience? Very well done. Mr. Teslin, may I be closing? Kathleen, you good to go? Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, so I recently went to Des Moines with a few others. Got to sit in on some great seminars about city life, basically. And I, what I chose to sit in on was, I think, stuff that is really good for what Burlington's trying to do, infrastructure for the next generation, you know, bringing in young professionals to here to live and work, housing, historic downtowns. It was just, I think it offered a lot of good ideas and some, a lot to think about, for sure.
Definitely a good...
Glad for the opportunity.
Definitely worth going to that one.
Absolutely.
Good deal, good deal. Let's make it back safe.
Yes, thank you. And then also, this weekend is the Garrett's Path 5K. That's on the 24th, from nine AM until noon. That's always a fun time, I always like to try to run in that, that's the only time I run, so... That's it.
All righty, Councilwoman Scott?
Yeah, I, I kind of had a little bit of a change of heart when I saw these kids come tonight, it just, it was wonderful. That second kid got up, speaks a natural.
He did a good job, didn't he?
It was awesome. And, but, I, I was, I, I, something very disappointing today. I, I was driving up Sixth Street, just past Division, and I, I went up past South Hill Park, and I couldn't get through because they were cutting down a tree. So, I turned right, went up Elm Street, right next to South Hill Park. So I turned right and went up Elm Street, right next to South Hill Park, and I couldn't get through because two cars were blocking my way. And then I, I heard a commotion in the middle of the park, and I looked, and there was 20 or 25 kids there, and there was a couple of them just beating a tar out of each other. And so, I, I, I was, I was upset. I mean, just 15 feet from where I was parked, some kid, young kid got shot and killed. I thought this, why does this have to go on? Why does this have to happen, especially in that park and, and in our community? And I, I had to end up going up on the curb and up on the grass and around and get around, and I, I wanted to get around so I could get a better look at what's going on. In the meantime, I called the police department and, and got them responding. Some kid comes running up behind my car, and he's got his phone, and he's, "Cop caller, cop caller." I thought, what's going on? Why weren't you calling the cops? But I think it'll probably be on Facebook somewhere tonight, the back end of my work vehicle, and then the fight that, that took place, because it usually always shows up on there. The police see it, they go out and they write citations to the not very intelligent people that were involved in it. And, but then, three kids in a car come by, and they, they, the one looked at me and said, "You say something?" I said, "Yeah." I said, "The cops were coming, you better get out of here." And so they, they did take off, but I think they were trying to intimidate me. But I was, I, it was just so disappointing. And then to see these kids that came tonight just lifted my spirits and, and I, I decided I wasn't going to talk as nasty about those kids as what I had planned because of, because of them. That's, you know, when you can do that, catch these kids early at this age, maybe when they get to be that age are the ones that were there, that this won't happen, and they won't be beating each other or shooting each other. Enough said.
The only thing I've got to add tonight, one, happy birthday, Larry Caston. Want to say congratulations Huh? Whatever. I wanted to say, I, I missed it last week. I want to say congratulations to Rob Sussman. He actually got some lady to marry him. It's a miracle. And I'll tell you, you know, my dad always said, "There's somebody for everybody." You just proved that, brother. But congratulations, Rob. Wish you the best with that. And also, our Tabitha, she just got married. Ron was here earlier, and just want to say congratulations to the newlyweds, Ron and Tabitha. And just on the fighting thing, you know, it's crap to see that, actually, to be a part of and witness it, but just to make you feel a little bit better, I had tons of friends that used to fight all the time after school, and I was one of them, and most of them, most of them are, they're still here in Burlington contributing, have families, and they're doing okay, so. I know you see, sometimes we see some things like that, but people, not everybody stays in that lifestyle. People do get smart and grow out of that, so. Just, I'm going to keep praying for these little rascals. That's all I've got. Mr. Davidson?
I want to piggyback on Councilwoman Wilson. I was also privileged to go to Des Moines. Chauffed there by a very good driver, so even though he is a Nebraska fan, we seem to get along okay.
Who's McGregor?
There were no fisticuffs or anything in the car, and I guess, so it worked out. I did go to a session on water quality. It's a hot topic, and eventually it's going to cost us some money. But they were talking about different options you can with tradings and so forth. I went to a workshop on cultural competencies and differences, and, which I found to be very good, and that might be something that we could think about in the future, is a training session down here. Then, is economic development changing in Iowa? That was just kind of a recap on, on different types of funding mechanisms. And the last one I went to was the Open Meetings update, which is, was basically the same rehash of rehash, but make sure you do things correctly and don't get caught having illegal meetings, et cetera. So, it was a good reminder.
We don't
But it was a good reminder, particularly about emails. You got to just be real careful, so. Anyway, I appreciate you all sending me, and so, thank you.
Before I give it to you, I, I forgot one. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just, I forgot one. Just take a second, but I, I just want to throw this out there, too, that we, I got a complaint the other day about one of our nuisance guys, and I just have to say this to, to the citizens. It's not personal, and you shouldn't take it out on the nuisance guys. They're, they're doing what we're paying them to do. And everybody is always happy when they go take care of business unless it's them, but it, it's just about mutual respect. You know, nobody wants to live next door to a jungle. That's not, that's not fair, for, or whatever the reason is they're called. So I just want to throw that out there, that they're doing their job. Don't, don't write them and give them a hard time. If you're mad, if you get mad at a nuisance guy, I'm the main one that's saying, "Go get them." So send me an email, get mad at me. But, but don't take it out on them. They're just doing their job. They're just doing their job. And we, that's what they're getting paid for. They're doing what we're paying them to do. So, just throwing that out there. That's, that's a job as well. And these people, it's not personal with them. They're not doing it, and they don't get joy from it.
Right.
They're just doing their job, so. I didn't want to let this week pass me before I said that. Mr. Fleming?
Well, I have some very important things to say, but I'm going to wait till another meeting.
We're going to, we're going to let you wait, or we're going to wait you out on that. See you, manager.
The only fighting that I want to see is from the Irish. Unfortunately, they put up no fight this last
When are they going to start?
And I'm afraid it may be a season or two before we see any, too.
When will they start? When they play the Hawkeyes, maybe?
Speaking Go North Dakota. Water, no, I don't mean that.
You know, it's time to shut her down.
Water quality is, is a big topic, and it was, was talked about at the session this, this last week. They talked about the nutrient trading program, and I know we followed up. Dustin was League of Cities' legal rep and lobbyist. He's moved on to an outside firm, but still is spearheading the, the efforts on looking for different ways that we can afford to pay for infrastructure. One of the things that's going to come up this next legislative session, and it's already starting to be talked about, is the potential for, the next, next time there is a sales tax passed at a statewide level, the first three eights of a penny goes towards water quality initiatives. That's one of the things that's being talked about this next legislative session, and there is another one this last year that was talked about with a modification to the schools penny. You know, those are all efforts that pit different groups against each other, but somewhere, there needs to be a solution. This is bigger than what the city is. This is more of a statewide and really truly a national issue in terms of what they're trying to accomplish for protecting our water supply, not just on a short-term basis, but on a long-term basis. So I just encourage all of you to make sure that you keep up to date on what's going on at a, at a statewide level as we move into this next legislative session, and make sure that you, you're keeping the community needs in mind as you talk with your representatives. A couple other things. Hopefully yours is having a grand opening next week, Thursday, September 29, at, from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon. They're going to have a short ceremony at 1:00, so I would encourage you to attend. Another ceremony that's going on next week, Hy-Vee Gas Station. I don't think I've ever been to a gas station before, but this is truly an interesting deal with the new gas station that they're doing the grand opening for next Tuesday, September 27 at 10:00. They're going to be able to, the fueling there is going to be fairly unique. There's going to be, you're going to have multiple blends that you can choose on your ethanol, and that allows Big River Resources to be able to be a supplier for them. So this is something that is providing a, a nice market. It's something that is a big thing for our community, and you're all encouraged to, if you can, to make it to that event. City Day is a few weeks out yet, but just to put it out there, Saturday, October 15, from 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon, it's by Den, in Denworth Park by the pool. That's free activities that will be, be involved with that, and I know that we'll have more pushed out as time comes up to that, but just get, get that out there for you to be thinking about. And I'll put in a, into your reader file, Glenn's demolition case. We got just a short piece of information on it. That was the lawsuit that had been filed, was dropped from Glenn's demolition on the former Dresser Rand site. So that's something that we can put to rest and, and be done with as a, as a potential issue out there. And I think that covers what I had, so. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right.
One other thing, the date for the city meeting, is that going to say?
Yes. That's going to be a meeting before the, before a meeting next week.
So do special
Special meeting?
Special meeting at like 4:00? Is that what you're looking at?
I believe so, just happened, yeah.
Just prior to the 4:30?
And the papers need to be turned in by Thursday, I believe. If there's nothing else, and, yeah, be another, another year with Jim for no, so that ought to be exciting.
My kids think it is some days.
Steph, get the film better. Zach, quit making your wife cut your grass. If there's nothing else
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Kathleen?
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson? Aye.